I hope it's not open. I watched the news though, they didn't say all that, so it's changed.
I think they're, I think they're married. But yeah, that would be really convenient to cut from. Just turn on that.
Well, I told what's the name, General Manager down there.
I never thought about that.
We're sitting here asleep, get one open.
I did, I think this is right. So the rain's supposed to. I ran out and I ran past him and I sort of went back. When I came back he moved, I think he probably freaked out.
I want to be dressed good, in case it gets cold. Three o'clock though, it should be done.
I'd like to do that.
That's creepy, yeah, that's up near Old North Road. And then the back, the part just before Morganton Boulevard, the backs up against those, you know, the fences and the factories, and there's dogs that bark like hell that used to be free that ran up and down. The fence, I mean, I couldn't tell they weren't going to get over the fence, but still, it was like, those things bark at me and just run with me the whole time was not, not great. But yes, yeah, the really high banks. Like. Yeah.
Just want to guess.
You gotta, don't come back.
Okay.
And that was, and.
Get your little water.
Twenty-five thousand.
He's a slayer, he's a starter.
No food in your. Hello, I'm Will. I'm Will and I'm.
Here we go.
I got paper to print.
All right, everybody, ready? Good evening and welcome to the city council meeting of the city of Lenore for Tuesday, February the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. We welcome you here this evening on a very special day. We've already had a enjoyable reception earlier, even though we, we're trying to change the rules on that and not to let a certain person retire, but you know how that goes. He finally looked up. But anyway, we'll be, we'll be talking about that here in just a few minutes. Then we'll go to our moment of silence and our pledge allegiance. Before we do that, please keep Paige Counts, our director of communications here for the Caldwell County. Her husband passed away this past week. Please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Kind of very unexpected and we are very sorry for the family. I think the funeral was today, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers over these next weeks as, as they try to adjust to everything that's happened. So, anyway, right now, please join us, moment of silence and our pledge. Thank you. We salute the flag. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And we're gonna start with a special resolution honoring Mr. Radford Thomas. Radford, come up with me, join us here. Had a nice reception earlier today, a lot of Radford's colleagues, friends that came from around the state to wish him well and, and we do as well, even though we tried to cancel this several times, but he just won't accept that, so we'll keep him around. He's gonna remain in Lenore with us, we know, but we, and we got some ideas for him, so he will keep using that. But Radford, thank you for all you have meant to, to the city, to all of us, everyone that you've worked with and, and all over the state, actually, and a lot of different places. We, we certainly have enjoyed having you here, working with you. It's been a, it's been a pleasure, calling you not only colleague, but more importantly, friend. And you have been a good friend to, to not only myself, to council and all of us. So we will miss you in the everyday, but we will hopefully see you in some other special things that we hope will be, will be happening. So we have a resolution I want to present to you and read at this time. This is honoring Radford L. Thomas. Whereas Radford Thomas became, began serving as the public utilities director for the city of Lenore on August eighth, two thousand and eleven, where he oversaw operations of the city's water and wastewater systems. And he was promoted to public services director in July of two thousand and twenty-two, where he was responsible for managing the city's public utilities and public works departments. And whereas Radford, a graduate and proud supporter of Appalachian State University, previously served as manager for several North Carolina towns, including Denton, Scotland Neck, Newton, Ed- Eden and Marshville, as well as managing two nonprofits. And whereas, you're gonna lose that. Whereas, in addition to his duties with Lenore, Radford also served as a member of the International City County Management Association, known as the ICMA, and the North Carolina City County Management Association as a city representative to the Catawba Water Re Water Management Group and a member of the city of Lenore's customer service team. Obtain, and obtained certifications in water distribution and wastewater collections, graduated from the UNC School of Government Public Executive Leadership Academy, known as Pella, in two thousand and twelve, and completed ICMA's Gettysburg Leadership Institute in two thousand and fourteen. And whereas in two thousand and fifteen, Radford spent two weeks in Timor West.
That's it.
Less Day, thank you, East Timor, representing the city of Lenore and ICMA as part of an exchange and fellowship program sponsored by the United States State Department and ICMA. And whereas during his tenure as department director, Radford oversaw many projects and improvements to the city's water and wastewater systems, including renovations to the Gunpowder Creek and Royal Creek wastewater treatment plants, replacement of more than twenty thousand feet of sewer line, improvements to the George L. Bernhardt Senior Lake Rhodes Water Treatment Plant, including two new filters, a new chemical storage building and a mechanical pretreatment unit, and implemented the advanced metering infrastructure AMI project. Begin planning for the Lenora slash Valleys Water Inter- Interconnection Project and the Finley Area Water System Improvements, and oversaw the EPA Brownfields Program for the city of Lenore. And whereas Radford has announced his retirement effective March first, two thousand and twenty-four, with more than thirty-six years of public service, including twenty-six in local government to the citizens of Lenore and North Carolina. Now therefore being resolved that I, as mayor, and on behalf of the city of Lenore council and all the citizens, do hereby congratulate Radford on his retirement and commend him for the example he has set as a dedicated public servant. And be it further resolved that council and I extend our sincere appreciation and deep gratitude for his faithful and outstanding service and many contributions to the betterment of our city. This is the twentieth day of February, two thousand and twenty-four. Congratulations. Got one other thing to present, and we couldn't let you leave without a key, even though you can't open anything with it. It symbolically means good things, but no, this key is, means, tells us that you served your city very well and for a long time, and you did wonderful things to keep our city the best place it could be to live, work and play. Presented to Radford L. Thomas, public services director, in honor and recognition of thirty years, plus years of outstanding public service in municipal government, including twelve plus years of dedicated and accomplished work to the city of Lenore by the Lenore City Council, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four. Congratulations. And then we'll get everybody to shoot a pen.
I'll try.
I'm gonna say, Radford, before you begin, you're the only guy I know that's received the key to the city twice.
Yeah.
Because you received it two hours ago and again today, so you're the first.
Thank you. First of all, it's, it's been an honor. First time he's ever been speechless. Probably right. I remind our, our employees all the time how fortunate we are to have a council that works as well as you do together. The direction that you give us, the resources that's been provided to us over twelve and a half years and probably, and I'm sure longer, to do the jobs that we do. Not every community has a council that works the way that you do. You allow us to do our jobs, and that's huge, that's huge. I have worked in situations where that wasn't always the case, and it makes things very difficult. When we have everyone on the same page, or in the middle of the river road in the same direction, it makes all the difference in the world. You know, these folks sitting back here, you know, working with them has just been a pleasure. And it's all gonna be in very good hands. John, Jeff, you know, doing a great job, won't miss a beat. Everything's gonna be in very good hands and, you know, we, we've done a lot. And I say we, because it's all about us and we, but we've done a lot, the construction. I said when I came to work here, and y'all have heard me say this before, but when I came to work here in two thousand and eleven, Lenore had been through some difficult times, lost some jobs, the community was struggling. But what I saw was a community getting ready for what's coming next. The quality of life things that were being addressed, the greenway. You know, all those, all those kinds of things were being put in place for what was coming next. And by having that vision and doing that, it makes our work so much easier because we have a target. You know, and all we need to do is keep working in that direction, and that's, that's been what we've tried to do. Probably one of the best things I've done with the talent of, of the folks in the utilities department and the public works department, the best thing I could do was give them what they need to work with and get out of their way. They are excellent, they are excellent. Haven't worked with anybody any better anywhere. So I've, I've been honored to serve with all of them, and I appreciate it very much. Come on down, guys. Somebody, you have, have the mayor hold the resolution.
Now you, now you need to be in the front. I need to be up front. Uh-oh.
TJ, what did you do?
Hey, Radford, did you get somebody to fix that?
I think so.
It is a pain in the head to work for.
Stay there before you run here.
Center, center. Everybody here, take two steps up this way. That's a little, all right. I can see everybody, TJ, go this way. All right, a couple without a flash and then a couple with. Ready, one, two, three, cheese. And then we'll do a flash. One, two, three, cheese.
Good.
Got it.
Told the folks earlier, Radford, my daddy, thirty-plus years ago, he had jet black hair. In thirty days, it turned white and gone.
Radford, we appreciate, as we said, everything. Hope you enjoy some time off. I know you're planning a trip there right after the first, I heard you say it earlier today, so enjoy that and then be ready to come back because we may have to holler at you for something, you know. You'll have to help correct a few things every now and then, just to, just to keep you around, so. But congratulations again and thank you for all the years of service. All right, we'll move on then to matters scheduled for public hearing. We do not have any this evening, so we'll move on to consent agenda items. This consists of minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, January twenty-third. Item B is a public hearing request, ordinance amendments. This is a recommendation that council called for a public hearing to be held on Tuesday, March fifth, two thousand and twenty-four, to consider ordinance amendments relating to the chapter nine as flood damage prevention of the Lenore City Code of Ordinances relating to, chapter nine, oh, wait a minute, ordinances note. The planning board is not required by current law to review these changes as this chapter does not change any of the zoning requirements for the city. Item C is a resolution of intent. This is a lease of city property. We're asking for the resolution of intent for the lease of the city property for a term of ten years to the Bernhardt Transportation LLC, and authorizing staff to initiate public notice requirements. City council is considering a lease of the property described on the council action form included in the agenda packet to Bernhardt Transportation LLC. Upon the terms and conditions set forth herein and described in the attached lease, an authority authorizes city manager or his designee to execute all instruments necessary for the city council consideration of the lease. And item D is the resolution that we just presented to Mr. Radford Thomas a few minutes ago, in honor of his retirement on March first. That's items A through D, and I'll open it to the council for any discussion and/or motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to accept council agenda items A through D as presented.
Thank you. A motion from Mayor Pro Tim Stevens that we approve consent agenda items A through D as presented. There's no other question or anything, I'll call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you very much. Unanimous, all right. We'll move on then to requests and petitions of any citizens. If there's anyone who would like to address the council tonight, this is the time to do so. Most everybody's our staff, we welcome Jennifer here and, as always, and anyone else that might want to speak. All right, seeing no one, we'll move on then to, we do not have reports of our boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the city manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mayor, council tonight, just a few items for information. This Friday, February twenty-third at eight a.m., we'll begin our, the council's annual budget planning retreat, and that'll be held again eight o'clock Friday morning at the J. Hebrew Hill Civic Center, I think it's in room two fifteen. So want to put that on your calendar. The planning board will meet on Monday, February fifth, I mean, Monday, February twenty-sixth at five p.m. in these, or five thirty p.m. in these chambers. The committee of the whole will meet on Tuesday, February twenty-seventh, eight thirty a.m., and that's the third floor city hall. And the foothills regional airport authority will meet on Wednesday, February twenty-eighth, at the airport facility. And I think that's gonna be at noon.
It is.
I know there's several items, excuse me, going on with Black History Month, and you just need to go to the city's website for more information on that, citylenore.com, and you can find information there and appreciate the programs we're doing at the MLK facility. Tonight, we have one item for council action. This is to authorize a city attorney and city manager to proceed with executing necessary documents to acquire two parcels of land. We were approached by College Avenue Baptist Church about acquiring two parcels. One's a point two-three-five-seven-four-eight acre tract, that's NC Pen two-seven-four-nine-six-five-five-eight-six-three. It's also parcel ID zero-six-dash-one-three-dash-three-dash-twenty-one. This parcel's located on College Avenue. The church owns nine tenths of this parcel. There's one area left that we'd have to go back and try to acquire that last remaining one tenth from. Also, parcel number two is a point two-three-four-three-two-one acre tract, NC Pen two-seven-four-nine-six-five-six-seven-three-zero. Also parcel ID number zero-six-dash-thirteen-dash-three-dash-twenty-two. This parcel's located on Spain Irish Street. Both these parcels are located adjacent to a tract of land the city already owns in our recently adopted downtown master plan. It suggested we go back and acquire additional land in that area for parking. These are two tracks for that. The church agreed to sell those two tracks for the current tax value, and they're both fifty-one hundred dollars apiece. And we think we can acquire the additional one tenth of property from the air for a thousand dollars. So we request that you go back and authorize the attorney and the manager to go back and proceed with acquisition of these properties for not to exceed price eleven thousand two hundred. We think we can get at least fifty parking spaces on those lots, maybe more. We haven't had it designed or surveyed yet, but that's the anticipation. With that, if you have questions, I'll try to answer those. Hannah Williams has been involved from the planning department with the church on that. The church has voted to go back, their full congregation voted to agree to the sale of those two lots. And the city attorney roar is looking at the title search and the opinion on both those tracks right now as well.
That's correct.
So we won't proceed until that's finalized to make sure it's all accurate.
Okay, any questions with the city manager or Hannah Williams or a planning director concerning that? Okay, all right, then you heard the recommendation from the city manager and staff to authorize the city attorney and city manager to proceed with executing the necessary documents to satisfactorily acquire the two pieces of property as were presented in item one and two. I'll entertain a motion to give the authorization. I'll so move. Have a motion from council member Purdue that we authorize the city attorney and the city manager to proceed with this. No other question, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, thank you. Do a good job and bye. All right, we'll move on then to any report or recommendations from our city attorney. No, sir. Okay, thank you. I, from the mayor's office, I would like to say thank you to everybody who went. We had the essentials of municipal government in Asheville last week. Council member Rogers and Presswood and Purdue, myself, city manager Hildebrand, we're all there. Great, great course, we appreciated it. We got our ethics training in, which we have to do, and also found, learned a lot of, a lot of good things. So we appreciate everyone going and being a part of that. I want to say congratulations to council member Purdue. He is going on the League of Municipalities RMS Board of Trustees, and will have his first meeting this month, and we excited that he's gonna be going on that board and keep, keep us doing good things in the insurance pools across the state. He'll do a great job with that, we appreciate it. And to Mr. Beal, who finished the, uh, advanced leadership training course last week or so on that. It's a great course, I know you picked up a lot of great things. Appreciate that you went and, and did that, and I know you'll bring some good things to us for that. So congratulations on all those things going on. Other than that, I think that covers it. Anything from any of our, yes, sir.
Does any of the Rotarians want to go back and talk about the chili cook-off, sale, whatever, tickets?
Oh, yes, yes. We have coming up this Thursday Rotary, Rotary Club, who I am a member and, and Dr. Church, remember, chili cook-off Thursday at First Methodist Church. Ten dollars for the best homemade chili, corn, cornbread muffins and banana pudding and homemade ice cream you'll ever find anywhere. Ten dollars, Jeff's got tickets, I've got tickets, and like for you to, like for you to help us.
I'm good, it's always a good event.
Yeah.
Who are your judges this year, anybody we know?
You know, he's late, no, here he is. Chief, chief is, chief is a judge, Katie Brummett, Brummett?
Brummett, yeah.
Brummett over at.
Liquid Roots.
Liquid Roots, and.
Stephen Starnes.
What, Starnes?
Stephen Starnes, yeah.
Stephen Starnes, all right, yeah. I tried, I tried to get you into it, Norman, but he's a little bigger, I think. It's a lot of chili, a lot of chili.
Ouch. We got a few minutes for rebuttal, chief, if you'd like to. That's good. Always a great event. Thank you for the Caldwell Rotary for, uh, for putting that on. And I know they do a lot of good things with the money, for sure, on that. Anything else? I know there is, uh, I can't think of Black History Month that you know anything we need to bring up or think. Not necessarily bring up, no. Okay. Trying to think. I don't, I can't think of any. I know there's been several events. Yeah. On that. Uh, let's keep, uh, Lester Whittington in our thoughts and prayers. Lester had surgery and, and his home and, uh, as far as I know, he seems to be, I know he's having some pain. He told me. I talked to him. But, uh, he seems to be doing better and I'm hoping this will be a, a good thing for him. So if you get a chance, drop him a card, send him something, let him know you're thinking about him and, uh, as he's in his recovery, uh, stage or whatever. And, uh, we'll keep him in our thoughts and prayers for sure. So, appreciate that. All right. If nothing else to come before us tonight, we stay adjourned.